Okay, we're going to call to order our regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, October 16th. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Here. Can you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation?
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads with me. Our gracious Heavenly Fathers, we come before you tonight doing this business of the city. We ask that you just guide our decisions and our discussions to be respectful in what's best for the future of the city. At this time, we ask for protection for our first responders, our firefighters, and everybody that's out there keeping us safe, both in our neighborhoods and around the world. We ask that you bless this meeting tonight. Thank you all so much for all of our volunteers that make the city so great. And we ask this in your name. Amen. Yes. Can we get a report from our closed session, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council did convene in closed session. No formal action was taken. There's no reportable actions.
And can my colleagues join me up front for a couple of presentations? So, you know, we're a very small city, and we depend a lot on our staff, but even more importantly, on our volunteers. And we have such amazing bank of volunteers, young and old alike, and they just put in countless hours to make our events and our activities just outstanding. They tend to every little detail and just make this place great. So, tonight, we had a dinner for them earlier. The council was blessed enough to be able to serve them for the first time, and now we'd like to recognize them individually. So, as I call your name, if you could come on up. We have Carolyn Legere, and I apologize for butchering the names. And Elizabeth Legere. Elizabeth Legere? Alex Massumi. Sarah Kwan. Emma Mesa. Fiorella Beredo. Clara Brusa. Brooklyn Davis. Sebastian Ciccarelli. So, I would say, in this group, none of them are old enough to drive, yet they do know how to volunteer their time. So, I also want to thank the parents, because I know this really falls on you for getting them to where they're supposed to be, and I know it's not always from nine to five. Sometimes it's four o'clock in the morning, and sometimes it's very late at night. So, you guys are teaching them the right things, and they're going to be just amazing human beings, because they started early on in learning how to pay it forward in their community, and that's what makes it just a great place to live. So, I want to thank you guys so much for everything that you do, and please, please keep doing it.
You guys can kind of squeeze in, and if you can't see Alyssa, you're not going to be in the photo, so make sure you get to a spot where you can see the camera. If somebody to come in front, kneel in front, that's fine, too. A couple of you guys can go in front, that's fine. Parents, go ahead. Just keep smiling, you guys. Just keep smiling.
Always. They always smile.
Soon as the phones go down, then you can go back to your seat. Couple more. All right, are we good? All right, thank you, guys.
So, this is one of these presentations that if I don't do it, maybe it won't happen, but unfortunately, our wonderful Director of Park and Rec, Corey Lakin, is moving on to bigger waters. He is going to be the Director of Park and Rec and Community Services for the City of Culver City. He's been with us just over 10 years. We just gave you that 10-year award. Maybe we shouldn't have done that. You know, he's the guy that you give him nothing, and he makes it spectacular. Most of you here know him, work under him, work for him, and watch him in operation. He's assembled a staff and a troop of volunteers that make our little city, the events we put on rival any big city that we do, and this is Corey and his just expertise and how to get these things right. So, we are very, very sad, but we're so happy and so proud of you, and knowing that you started here as a recreation leader?
Supervisor.
No?
Supervisor.
Supervisor, okay. And worked his way up, and he's going to take what he's learned from here and make Culver City better, not better than us, but just better. And we're going to miss you, but I know your kids are involved with the local community here in some of the sports, and his sister's involved with Casa U Shelter, and they're not going anywhere, I'm going to promise you that. So, we'd like to bring you on up and just acknowledge you, and we can bring up your And before that, I'd like Mayor Protem Edgar to say a couple of words. He's been working with you probably the longest here.
Good evening. My name is Troy Edgar. I've been on the City Council for almost 12 years. I was here when we hired Corey on board, and I just wanted to say a couple of words about what a great guy this guy is and what a loss he'll be to the city. You know, 10 years ago, if you knew the city, we were going through a lot of turnover, a lot of turmoil. Corey came in, he had the best attitude. He was just always positive, very focused, and, you know, his story is really unique, because he also had a really good mentor, Angie Avery, who kind of took him under her wing and mentored him into being a really great recreation leader. And going through that, you know, being a recreation leader in a small city like this, he's going Hollywood, so he's going big time here coming up. But while he was here, this is, you know, he's the guy that puts on a big event at the base. He calls all the businesses, him and Steven Mendoza. They try to get sponsors. Then they call all the community volunteers, and they get all the charities to get people out there. And, you know, if you think about how small our city is, but how much Corey's been able to kind of pull everybody together in the city, he was a shining example of kind of what the city needed at that time. And through the tuturship of his mentor with Angie, helped pull him along up and really grow himself into just being an unbelievable leader in this city. I'm very sad to see him go, but another byproduct of a great city and a great run city is that we grow people that move on to go to better places. So, I hope that the community acknowledges Corey for all of his great contributions to our city, for all the great things that he's done. You know, and probably just in closing, you know, what's been going on the last two years is, you know, everybody's heard about our pool at the base and, you know, and a restructuring with the military, and through that relationship, as it matures and tries to get a little bit more formal, we really lost our opportunity to continue our 20-year partnership with the pool. I would say that Corey, with a very cool hand in the part of being a business guy, I was like, hey, you know, we put $3 or $4 million into that pool, you know, we don't want to keep doing this if it's not going to be our pool anymore. Corey's like, look, it's all about the community, making sure we sustain these programs, continue to provide and save our children by getting them into swim classes, and even fighting a little bit with policymakers. He was like, no, we need to do this for the community, and he kept that program going for two more years as we wound down the pool operation. So, I just can't say enough good things about Corey, and probably the last thing I will say is that I see a sister in the audience, Amy Lakin. Can I just go ahead and acknowledge her? So, to tell you about what this family is about is Amy came, and she's actually the Executive Director now for the Casa U Shelter here in Los Alamositos. So, you've got recreation and the charity bookings here, and I just want to say to the family, we're really going to miss you. The city's just been very better because of you being here, and I just wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
I'll give you the mic, and you can also introduce your family and say a couple of things.
If I have to, okay. Thank you. Yes. Well, thank you very much, first of all, to the City Council, City Manager. It's 10 years. It's hard to believe that it's been 10 years, but I very much appreciate it. The community's been spectacular, really embraced myself and my team. It's just, it's really been a phenomenal run, and it's very bittersweet going to a bigger agency and hopefully some more opportunities. I can whip some other staff into shape. This one's really, my staff here has whipped me into shape. It's been a true blessing. I know there's no way that I'm going to have such amazing support, but excited for the next adventure. And I just want to thank all of you for, first of all, the volunteers. Again, spectacular, I think collectively, about 5,500 hours of volunteer between the 90 or so volunteers. So, very much appreciated. There's no way that I could be successful at my job without all of you, and obviously the parents who get them to and from every day, like the mayor said, early in the morning till late at night. We really do appreciate it. So, I thank you very much for this honor. My family's here, my wife, who's holding the camera in the back, Karen, my two kids, Ethan and Caleb, my sister has already been introduced, and then my folks, Barry and Sandy are sitting down here as well. So, again, without their support, I definitely wouldn't be who I am and being up there. But I also want to thank my staff, Trini and Ron, Alyssa, the rest of the recreation staff, Emmeline, who's on maternity leave, but I think working more hours than when she's actually working a 40-hour work week here, and Anna, and like I said, the rest of the recreation staff. It's truly been an honor. My colleagues, the department heads, it's, it really is a pleasure to come to work here every single day and get up and be here early and stay late, and I really appreciate the last 10 years. So, thank you.
Let the crowd just burst for a minute?
Yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah, that's Rich's move right there.
They don't want to talk about trash either. They can't picture us on the screen, it doesn't show any. I'm like, I'm getting my TV up there, so we can get it with a 1975. We've got the council to do that, it's already wired.
Give him only three minutes.
That's a big fine, we'll give him five. Okay, we're moving on to oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. We'd like to have our first speaker, our Battalion Chief from Orange County Fire Authority, Robert Acosta, come and give us a Canyon Two fire update, if you could, please.
Mayor, Council, thank you for giving the opportunity to update you on the Canyon fire that's almost out. But before I start, I'll say, as a Division Chief for Orange County Fire and your local fire chief, I was pretty happy to see our room go to the allowable occupancy level. Not that I was counting, but I was a little stressed out. After all, I still am on probation, so. So, I just, I wanted to provide you an update on the fire, because you guys were involved, you've been part of the Orange County Fire Authority, and just bring you up to speed on our efforts there. This is, this map that you have in front of you is also, I just wanted to bring it on, to give you the scale and scope of the effort that we made. This is the first major fire that we've had in Orange County since 2007, 2008, for the, that was the Santiago fire and the freeway complex fire, respectively. So, we're pretty taxed to have a fire of this magnitude. If, just to put the scale, put it to scale for you, the top red line is the 91 freeway, and then the red line that traverses down the left side of your screen goes through Anaheim Hills, through the city of Orange, Orange Park Acres. It goes through, all the way down to Tustin, through the Peters Canyon area, down to Tustin, then it follows the 241 all the way back up to Anaheim, down to the Anaheim corridor. So, in all, the fire burned about 9,000 acres. It's 9,200 acres. We have, currently, we have 90% of the fire contained. By tomorrow, we anticipate it's 400%, contained. At the peak of the fire, we had 3,500 fires, or 3,500 structures that were actually threatened, and we were defending. At the end, when we're all said and done, unfortunately, we lost 25, were destroyed with 25 that received damage of some sort. The real story to me, of being there and being on the ground, was the effort and the work that the men and women did of the Orange County Fire Authority to really put themselves in some very, very untenable conditions to protect the homes. They saved hundreds of homes on this fire because of their efforts. This fire started last Monday at 9:45. Ironically, with all that wind that was predicted and the short staff because of what was going on in Napa, myself and my peers got together on a conference called O-900 to talk about how we were going to address this fire, how we were going to manage it, and if something occurred during this wind event. And 45 minutes later, this wind event occurred. So, we all knew exactly where, all had a good idea of where we're going to go and what we were going to do, and I think that's what led to some of the success of this fire. The, oops, went the wrong way. The call came down at 9:45 on Monday. The dispatcher walked outside, and this is outside of our headquarters, if you're familiar with it, and took a picture down, just down behind our training center, and that's what she saw. So, she, they immediately went to a red flag dispatch and dispatched quite a bit of the county. That's the view as we led headquarters, went down Jamburi Road. The bulk of our resources were stationed around Cowan Heights and Orange Park Acres, up to the city of Orange, with the Anaheim units guarding up on the Anaheim side. This is the view from Canyon Heights. This is about the peak of the fire. You see there's two firefights coming at us. There's one coming over Jamburi Road on the right, there's one coming from Santiago Canyon Road, and this is, when those two came together, that's where we really had the, our firefighters really stood their ground. This is them right there. When those two firefights came together, they're standing at the house, they're waiting for the firefight to pass so they can get up and man their hose lines and protect those houses. It was, it was quite a, quite experience for these guys. We ended up saving it with that firefight and the air support that came in. I put this slide just to show you some perspective of what the people are dealing with. Those people are a couple hundred yards away from the flames, and they're still dwarfed by the length of the flames. But at this particular time, the flames are about 60 feet in length, and they're bumping up against the houses, and the guys are actively putting the fires out on the houses. This is what saved, this is what made our effort successful, is having these guys drop the fire retardant across Orange Park Acres. Most of the drops were very accurate and really, really helped our cause. As I move on, oops, I don't have the red one. Yeah, and there was one that wasn't so accurate, but, so, that's, I put this slide in just because our guys, once the fire's gone, we still make the effort to go and clean the house off and close it off and try to get it back to the best condition that we can. Just as a note, our guys wanted to say, with Breast Cancer Awareness Month, maybe we could just leave the house pink for a few months. But no, they got the house cleaned up, and it made the neighbors, or the resident very happy that we made it through that effort. That's my time. So, just a couple more quick slides I wanted to show you. This is part, this is the morning after. This is the effort that went to go save those 3,500 homes that were threatened. They came from all over. They came from San Diego, right on the border, all the way up from Ventura and Oxnard and all the way into the IE. And the point I wanted to do that, to show you, is this effort right here, if this is us, because of the relationships that we have established within not just the county, but in Southern California with other fire agencies, if something ever happened here in Los Alamositos, whether it's an earthquake, flood, or tsunami, you had, you had two of your captains over there, Captain Minios and Christman, that worked right out of your station, too. They assisted in the effort, and if something ever happened here, we would receive the same kind of response here and a support. So, that's the, that's the beauty of the regional protection, and it's really a story that went well. So, it should be done tomorrow. We should have everybody off the line sometime tomorrow about 6 o'clock. Do you have any questions?
All right, we'll continue on with public comments.
My name is Shelley Henderson. I'm Editor of Orange County Breeze, and I'm here to offer a public service announcement for a different kind of disaster. This comes from the security firm Word Fence. They have announced a severe security breach for all Wi-Fi-enabled devices. If your device uses Wi-Fi, it is vulnerable, so please check for updates regularly by hand. Don't wait for your automatic weekly update. The last time I checked, there had been no patches released yet, but do know that if your device uses Wi-Fi, everything from the phone that you carry at your hip to the printer in your office, everything is vulnerable if it uses the WPA2 Communications Encryption Protocol. There is a detailed service announcement at OC-Breeze.com if you want to get into some of the nitty-gritty, and I will leave this printout with Wendy.
Good evening. My name is John Benfoni. I have a property, 3561 Howard Avenue, Los Alamositos, California. I was here last month in discussions about Assembly Bill 1826. I just want to read something briefly, just to bring us up to speed. I know I have five minutes, so I don't want to bore everybody. The Act requires a business which is defined as a commercial or public entity that generates more than four cubic yards of commercial waste or organic waste on varying dates of requirements, arranged for recycling services. Existing law also requires jurisdictions to implement a commercial solid waste recycling program, meeting these specific elements. Before I talk about the requirement on a company, I want to just briefly talk about what the city's and the direction that we're pursuing. It looks like the city's current course, or they've been advised, that in the best interests of achieving this compliance with the state law, that they contract with a local entity to provide these recycling services and then mandate those costs across all commercial properties in Los Alamositos. I don't believe that is the correct course of action. The law simply states that the city has to, and again, I'm sorry to bore, the organic waste recycling program shall do all of the following. Existing organic waste recycling facilities with reasonable vicinity, so you need to identify those organic recycling facilities, identify solid waste facilities, identify potential sites, look at abandoned sites, effect zoning and permit requirements to enhance organic waste recycling incentives from organizing waste recycling programs, identifying barriers and fixing those, and providing education and outreach. And so, it also stipulates that you have the ability to enforce the law, either through fines or permits. And so, I question whether the proper course of action is for the city to engage in a contract and mandate that contract when the law simply states that you have to have a plan in force. That plan in force could be simply identifying commercial properties who must comply with AB 1826, create a community outreach program by educating community on law and compliance requirements, identifying organic waste facilities and identifying solid waste facilities, and providing that information to those companies that are affected, institute licensing processes like business licenses for those performing recycling services, and permits for commercial entities needing recycling services, and then enforce compliance through submission or proof of having done recycling through these vendors corrective actions or fines. It's not, you're not mandated or required to contract on behalf of businesses that have to comply with this law. We've identified 11 or 15 businesses that have to identify, I have not identified these, but I understand that the City Council's identified 11 to 15 businesses of which whom I do not know who they are, that may have requirements for the organic waste compliance that's due by January. Well, those are entities that are required by this law to comply, and I don't believe that it's appropriate for us to go across 600 commercial properties and decide to implement an 8.2% increase for a plan that is designed around contracting and mandating this law across the entire spectrum of the city. This law was intended just to affect those companies who generate organic waste and commercial waste, and not necessarily affect all businesses doing business in the city. It seems to me that it would be appropriate that if the city decided to maintain this course of action, that they determine those 18, or 11 to 15 properties that are generating that waste and attribute the cost associated with doing that, if the city felt that it was in the best interest of the city members to go ahead and contract on their behalf. I don't think that is the best interest. I think to identify the program, especially in the infancy of this law, don't jump on a pilot program, step back, see how this shakes out. I believe that your requirement under the city is, you're held to a standard that says that you did reasonable care in creating this policy and that you implement it, and that you don't necessarily have to contract. I have a commercial property, I have a three-yard bin, it's half-full. It's half-full, and it's picked up once a week. There's no reason. I'll never have to comply with this law, not in 2017, 18, 19, and maybe in 20, who knows if that's extended past then. And there are many other entities who will not have to comply either. So, I know my time is up. I just asked the city to determine what the correct course of action is, whether it's contracting, or whether it's sitting back and just developing a plan and allowing the, and allowing just those businesses that are affected to have to comply to this law. It's a state law, they can't go to another city. And so, I don't think it's fair that everyone has to pay for the, the, the needs of just 10 or 15 entities at this time, and later on, 20 or 30. Thank you. Sorry for taking too much time.
I am Larry Strather, and a little sunburned because I was out a little too much over for the Taste of Los Al for three days. But, that being said, I'm here to talk about Los Al TV. As some of you may know, that the server's been going in and out a lot. It's an eight-year-old server, and we thought we had tracked down the issue. We put in a new power supply. It turned out a heat sink had fallen off it, so when it got in the hot days of summer, we were having a lot of problems with it. Doug and I, we bought a new power supply, we put it in. We were still having some issues, and then we were working with electronics. It turns out the hard drive is failing. It's also eight years old. So, it's corrupting files, and so when the server encounters a corrupted file, it goes back to the virtual channel. So, and if it continues a really corrupted file, it goes black. And so, I've had to reset it a number of times. Sometimes I'll get an email from certain people in the community, and I've had to reset it like at 11 o'clock at night and 2:00 in the morning sometimes. But, anyway, they're both fixable issues. I don't want to get a hard drive, which is the main issue, until I know what we're going to do with the server. Because it would, it'd be a needless waste of money if we buy something that's not compatible with, with a new play-out server. So, I'm just notifying you this, that the servers are basically in the range of $9,000 to $14,000. And so, I know, I just want to get on the next meeting when we have a chance. I don't know the all-in cost, and like, what, what can we use from the current thing, so I'm still researching that. And it's like, it's like all electronics, they're a lot different than they were a year ago in terms of the cost, so I'm trying to figure out the best deals we can there. Anyway, I wanted also to thank you guys for the Taste of Los Al. I know it's not technically in the city, but everybody thinks it is. We have a lot of great restaurants here. We had attendance just under 3,000. So, I know softball sold over 500 tickets, so they're keeping 30 bucks each ticket, so they made 15 grand right there. I know they did really well at their silent auction. So, we have 80 tables, and the average table makes around $1,000 to $1,200, based on previous experience. So, this good money was raised there. So, we think overall, the event probably raised around $250 to $260. So, not a bad weekend, and I know some of you are there and having lots of fun when we weren't working you too hard. So, I just want to thank you for the, some of the help you guys put forward to it, and I know I'll be talking to you about the server issues, so that's it.
Thank you.
And here's the pen that Shelley did. And Cory, congratulations. And I'm not sure I buy the part about being happy to work late, but...
Do you have any other public comments?
Okay, I'll close oral communications and bring it back to council announcements, and I'll start with Warren.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Really not much to report. I know with respect to the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, we're going to meet this Thursday. We are watching the West Nile situation closely, and unfortunately, there was one fatality due to West Nile, so make sure that you remove any standing water and watch out for any kind of mosquitoes, and especially the ones that bite during the day. Those are not the ones that transmit in West Nile. Those are the ones that might carry the other bad stuff. So, make sure you report those to the Vector Control folks, or the city over here, city manager can take those calls as well and pass it on to OC Vector. Thank you.
I was able to attend Mobility 21 at Disneyland, which was where we are going to be in the future. And from what they were showing us, it's not going to be anything like what's out there now. Things are really going to be changing. It's going to present quite a problem and challenge for the cities to, to keep up, really. And I was able to join the mayor at the St. Hedwig's Carnival for the grand opening of that. It's a big event over at St. Hedwig's, and it was always fun. Thank you.
Josh.
I was able to attend the Los Al Alamos Unified School District, State of the District. It was a fun event, so Dr. Crop did an excellent job presenting and kind of giving an update of everything that's done, what's coming next. Also had a meeting with staff and is kind of providing an update on electrical vehicle charging. So, there's a company called Volt charging. You may have seen their charging stations at the Long Beach Town Center. Basically, they offer free EV charging, but they also do the installation, trenching, maintenance, and pay for electricity for free. So, I was curious to see if it's possible for the city of Los Al Alamos to have it, and be one of the first cities, you know, at least in the state, to have EV charging on the streets. And we're exploring the option and present hopefully back if this viable. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. Not a whole lot to report this time. A couple things, though. I'm going to be going off of the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. I've been on that for almost nine years, and because I'm getting ready to term out here in another year, we're actively lobbying for Councilmember Wilson to take that seat. So, we've been reaching out to our colleagues in the different cities. And again, this was the Conservancy that's basically responsible from San Gabriel Mountains, the river that goes all the way through down to Seal Beach, and then the Lower LA River that goes through the backside of Los Angeles. And it was responsible for us to be able to get the bike path paved, the Coyote Creek Park, and some of the different stuff going on there. So, Councilmember Wilson, we're definitely behind you, and we'll do everything we can to get you on there. I just want to say thank you to the community, to the city staff, for all the love and support. As my mom passed away the last two weeks, I just want to thank everybody for everything. Thank you.
Lieutenantal, a number of things at the base. The 79th Sustainment Transformation from a sustainment support to a theater support, which basically makes them deployable, and they focus on the Northern African region. So, that was, that was good for the 79th, and they're, they're growing and thriving and becoming a very large installment over at the base. Pleasant surprise, they had the Huntington Beach Air Show, which we were all excited about. This was our second year there. What happened this year is JFTB became the staging for the Blue Angels and the Canadian Snowbirds and the Army Blue Daggers. So, that was their home for a week. We were able to welcome them and interact with them, and they were just so complimentary of the hospitality that the city showed them this was their home, and they felt as though it was their home. So, they're excited to come back next year. Next year's air show is October 19 through the 21st. So, it's spectacular to be out there, standing in the sand, looking at the Pacific Ocean, and having the Blue Angels fly over you. I mean, nobody gets to do that, but blessed people like us, so that was very exciting. Attended the North Orange County Women's Conference, that used to be the Cypress Women's Conference, and then they added us, and we added Seal Beach, and this year, we added La Palma. Congratulations to Amy Payne, who was our Los Al Woman of the Year. And we were also able to have about 15 of our Los Al female students there attending their first women's conference. Did attend the St. Hedwig along with St. Hedwig alumni, Councilman Murphy, and were able to have some tri-tip and enjoy the hometown fair and everything. That was awesome. I do want to congratulate Judy Cablo and Green Street Interiors. They just celebrated their 40th anniversary here in the city, and considering we're only 57 years old, that's, that's pretty astounding for a small business to be around and growing and thriving as she is. So, congratulations to her on that. Regarding the Canyon Two fire, in addition to our own Los Al firefighters, they deployed 120 soldiers from the 79th Infantry that's on our base here. So, not only do they go and, and fight for us in other countries, but they also fight fires in our backyard, and I want to thank them for just giving it their all, as well as our firefighters. I did attend and spoke at the Los Al High School's 50th Anniversary this last Saturday. That was awesome. Chief Nunez was there, and it was just spectacular. I mean, they, they had a lot going on, a big old halftime show, different showcases, showing off the arts and the entertainments and the athletics and everything else. So, that was, needing congratulations to the, the high school on just everything that they've accomplished. And I also wanted to give a shout out to Los Al TV. You know, they, they've grasped the understanding that the studio is out in the community and not in, in between four walls. And I've been busy this month, as all of us have, and they have been everywhere I've been. In fact, they stopped interviewing me because it was just getting redundant. But, you know, they're, they're out there. They're, they're at St. Hedwig, and they're at the Taste for Los Al, and they're at the air show. I mean, they're just everywhere. And so, I just want to just offer my continued support for what they're doing, and I'm watching these high school and college kids behind the camera, in front of the camera, doing editing, and just putting their creativity to work. This is something that they want to do as a career, and I'm happy to say that they got their start here at Los Al TV, so thank you very much for that. And then finally, tonight, we do want to close our city council meeting on behalf of Maxine Edgar, mother of Mayor Pro Tem Troy Edgar. She was a beloved wife, mom, best friend, and grandmother, and she passed away on Sunday, October 8th, at the age of 81. She enjoyed her time spent in Los Al Alamos over the years with Troy and his family, and her passing ended a great journey and a life well-lived. She's comforted by her friends and family and is at peace with her Lord and Savior. So, tonight, we will be closing in her memory. And on to that, so items from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. I want to personally also thank Cory Lakin for his service to the city, and 10 years here, and four years working with him, and just fantastic person and colleague and leader and mentor to your team, and contributed to our executive staff team and to the city organization as a whole. And I'm going to miss you a lot. We're all going to miss you, and wish you all the best in Hollywood, as the mayor pro tems that. Good luck with everything in your future. I appreciate everything you do, and go Angels. We kind of have this Angels thing going on, too. Not Dodgers. And then I want to also welcome our new city attorney, Michael Dought, here. His first official meeting here. He, he went to our last planning commission meeting, and they introduced him there as well, but Michael is here and welcome. We're happy to have him and his whole team.
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, on to warrants. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Aye. Consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item.
I would like to pull B and D, please.
F and H, and I need to recuse myself from J.
G, but I'll need to recuse myself.
Richard, you're recusing from where?
F and H. Oh, J. J recuses. I live too close.
And Josh, which one are you recusing?
G. I work too close.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion for the balance?
I'll move the balance.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's start with B, warrant.
Okay, so this one, I kind of spoke out against it last month, and I want to try and, one more time, to urge my colleagues, let us, I would want us to consider just limiting the city prosecutor's role to what we had before this emergency ordinance to prosecute the red light camera violations. And, and I want to just kind of remind people, this could be really, this could be used very, very politically, and if you recall, not too long ago, there was a city, a former city official, elected official that was accused of forgery. And this body, whoever it is, could actually have taken on, I believe, the way this ordinance is written, say, "We want to prosecute that individual." And I think that's just something that we should leave to the DA for those types of things, and just limit it to, excuse me, limit it to the red light camera. And that, that's my opposition to the way the, the expanded powers that we have given this body. And it's not us, it's the future ones as well, that it could be abused in ways that would be very damaging to individuals. It would be very damaging to the city as a whole. And I think it's just something that we can leave it to, we can trust the, the law enforcement, the law, you know, excuse me, professionals at the county to take care of those, those matters that need it. So, with that, I'm going to try a motion that we accept this with the limitation of red light camera prosecution and, and reduce the powers that had been passed in the urgent, urgent ordinance from last month, and that'll be my motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, so motion fails. Do I have another motion to pass? Or another motion?
I'll make a motion for staff report to approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. No.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, item D, warrant.
Oh, okay, on this one, this one, I think ties back to last month's, if I can, Brett, with, with respect to, this one is like the organic recycling, right? The, the need for that.
Well, this actually, Mike Ballier has been our waste consultant, and he's, he, for example, he did the audit on our waste franchise agreement with Republic, and he's done other services related to the waste franchise. And this is an on-call agreement at an hourly rate to enter into an agreement with him. It's, no, it's not just organic waste, but that fits into the...
But what type of, what type of duties? It's on-call.
The, like, the, the audit that we have every other year with our audit, our franchise agreement itself, he goes in and makes sure that Republic is in compliance with our franchise agreement. He did that before, he will do that again.
So, that'll be part of this, part of this, this on-call fee of $20,000?
Yeah, the on-call at an hourly rate of $125 per hour.
To do the audit?
To do the audit and other related services related to the franchise agreement itself.
And then, okay, so, not having anything to do with the recycling that we had discussed last month, then?
Oh, yeah, it, yes.
Okay, so, so, so the question that I have, you know, when, when we have this, I guess, information provided to us that, you know, becomes somewhat false, then I wonder what are we getting? Because I'm looking at the CalRecycle site, something that the consultant said about a, a wrapper from In-N-Out Burger that might be sold with grease is subject to this organic recycling. That's false, and that's, that's actually called up in CalRecycle site, that it doesn't apply to those things. So, my question is, why would we want a consultant when we're getting bad information? We have information that we can actually get from a public source called CalRecycle.
The services that have been provided so far from Mike Ballier have been outstanding, and that's why we've recommended moving forward with him. He really is an expert in the industry. I mean, I think he can speak to that if that topic comes up later on, on item on the agenda, but the services have been outstanding.
So, then why do you have staff if we can't get information through your staff that's readily available from a California state entity, public entity?
I, the topic is very complicated, and there are experts out in the industry, and that's what we are relying upon.
Did anyone from your staff read the CalRecycle question-answer frequently asked questions, and at least do any kind of preliminary analysis of that?
We've read through that in the past. We read through it, actually, again today, based on some questions that we received, yes.
Okay, and how frequently do you do this? Once every time someone asks?
Not real frequently, that's why. We really do, with limited resources that we have, we do rely on experts from outside to help us.
Limited resources in terms of staff?
Yes.
Meaning that there's only 20, whatever, 40 hours in a week of, of work?
Yes.
And, okay, well, I think that this is probably premature. I think that there's probably some information out there that we don't need the consultant, unless it is for the auditing. But the auditing part, you actually bring that before us and ask us for the appropriation to the audit, correct?
I believe we did two years ago.
Yeah, so we, we've done that, so, okay, anyways.
We do it every other year as well.
Okay, no other questions.
Anybody else? Any?
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion, and I'll move to deny this, and I think that we've got enough information that's available. We don't need this consultant this time. We can always engage that later, I think, when the moment is needed, but my motion is to deny it.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion fails. And do we have another motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, item F, Richard.
Yeah, you know, I have two, two specific questions here. One, the staff report does not discuss how many billions of dollars this is going to One, the staff report does not discuss how many billions of dollars this is going to cost, and on a more, a bigger picture item, I'm wondering why we're opining on this? If somebody could, somebody had to put on the agenda.
Yeah, I put it on the agenda, if, Mayor, if you're okay. So, yeah, you know, part of the journey that I've been on, being on the council, if you remember, being, and you're now part of the San Tation District, we had invested about $5 billion in the groundwater replenishment system to really secure the water supply for Orange County. Through that process, got to work with the Orange County Water District, Metropolitan Water District, and really what this is for the community's sake is, this is called the California Water Fix, and this is a process that's going on right now to basically secure from Northern California the transportation of water from the Delta area down to Southern California. From my perspective personally, I look at it more of a focus of an economic viability measure to make sure that through the droughts and the process, it basically is the tunneling process that puts the infrastructure in place, very similar to, it's a lot of money, if you look in here, it's $15 billion in total as a price tag, but it's something that's actually funded through the water rate process over a long period of time. You know, following infrastructure spend, specifically wastewater and regular drinking water, if you've seen what happened up to two years ago within the state when we started having significant issues with the drought, and we were having issues up north trying to get the water through the Delta. For people that aren't familiar, the Delta basically is below sea level, and water comes down from Lake Orville, you've seen the dam that was having problems, that goes through the Delta, basically through the waterway and has to kind of wind its way through to then kind of make itself to the California aqueduct. What this infrastructure project does is try to then pick the water up at the dam, take it underground and tunnel it through the Delta, preserving the Delta. There's a lot of concerns that the Delta right now is potentially having saltwater intrusion, it's starting to have a lot of problems, and if the Delta fails in its current state, we won't be able to transport the water down to Southern California. Again, we're a little city, why are we opining on this, or I'd hope that we would just be able to give some sort of a letter of support, is that I look at, again, longer-term viability, you know, economically, I think it just is something that it helps shore up our ability to be able to have stable water supply, and through that process, to be able to provide stable water rates, and if any of you own businesses or are part of businesses out there, it's really important to kind of maintain that level of stability, and it's just a really important thing. We take positions on a lot of different things in the city, whether it's that we're going to weigh in in a few minutes on marijuana and how that affects directly in our city, but we also weigh in on state policy. If you look at our legislative platform that we approve every year, that this is within the purview of the platform, and I would respectfully request for an open discussion and be able to talk about this. I've also requested to have the Metropolitan Water District Board of Director and their staff come to talk about this, and again, this is an open discussion. Councilmember Murphy, I, whatever we need to do to talk through it, I'm just trying to help the city do its little part. Thank you.
And I'm certainly not against it. I actually took the tour of the Delta and stood, I mean, it's really mind-boggling to stand 50 feet below sea level and look at those dikes that are earth, you know, one big earthquake, and that, that whole thing is level. So, I, we have a problem. I just, my real thought is, I don't know if we got enough information here to, you know, to make, to make an informed decision. We didn't get any options, didn't get the cost, as I pointed out, and, like I said, I'm not, not against it, I just don't know how to be, I don't know enough to be for it, I think is really where I am.
Could I, would you like to have questions specifically? I think I'll really, just to be very direct, I'm just trying to provide a letter of many cities that are out there that are trying to just say, hey, look, directionally, we're supportive of infrastructure spending, directionally, we're, we support self-funding this, we don't want to try and raise taxes, we'll take a look at it, who gets the value in the whole water supply, and try to be able to kind of go and make sure that the costs are apportioned correctly. But is there any questions? Like I said, I was given a heads-up today that there might be more questions, and I just wanted to make sure if there was more information you needed, that we'd be able to talk about it tonight.
I would have liked to know what the other options are, you know, and I really haven't had a chance to read about this as much as I would have liked. Like I said, I have been up there, I do know there's a problem, and I know that there's a very delicate balance now, that a certain amount of water doesn't go into the north end of the San Francisco Bay, then the saltwater comes in, and if that happens, we get no drinking water from them for a year, let's say, for around time, and it's a very serious problem. I just would have liked to see more in the way of cost analysis and options, you know, what are other people proposing for this?
Okay. I would go back to staff or somebody from the Metropolitan Water District, I don't know if we...
We do have a representative from the Metropolitan Water District that could give a brief summary and perhaps answer questions. He's here tonight. Brett, I remember his first name, but I can't remember his last name.
Thank you very much, Brett, and mine is with two Ts, my parents stuttered, so. Thank you very much. Councilman Murphy, the cost of, well, let me back up. In 1960, we approved the state water project to build Oroville Dam and the state water project, but it was never finished. You've been to the Delta, you've, you've actually stood, in fact, I've been there, where you're 30 feet below the San Joaquin River, and you see big ships going by, and so you realize how, how vulnerable our water supply is. So, since about 1982, when we had the vote on the peripheral canal, state of California, numerous water interests, the water stakeholders, have studied different options, over 120 options were considered. If you remember, in 1982, the peripheral canal carried a capacity of water of roughly 22,500 cubic feet per second of water. That's, that's how we measure the water, is how much can move. We arrived at these two tunnels, twin tunnels, that are 9,000 cubic feet per second, so it's much smaller. But what we've done is we've put the intakes at the north end of the Delta, and that allows us two things. One, when you have enormous storm flows, you need the ability of moving that water south where the pumps are. Today, when you turn the pumps on at the south end of the Delta, you actually reverse the flows of rivers. And so, the Delta has become a conveyance facility, something for which it was never designed. So, this is a way of kind of fixing the plumbing and finishing that plumbing. So, the cost, that's, that's a big issue for me. I chair the finance committee up at Metropolitan, and the cost to the Southern California ratepayers is roughly $4.4 billion. When you look at the whole project, it's $17.1 billion. If you want to break it down per share, it's roughly $171 million per share, and there are 100 shares. And the way this will be constructed, the same way the state water project was constructed, it's the ratepayers that'll pay for it. So, it'll be on your water rate, it comes to maybe, in this area, maybe $1, $2 a month per ratepayer, so relatively insignificant investment. But the long-term reliability is what's so critical about this project. Being able to move water in high-flow and low-flow times, it's critical to have this. The ability of, should there be a significant earthquake and there be saltwater intrusion, it's going to take a while before it gets to the north and we can stop the saltwater intrusion, but we can still continue to move water from the north end of the Delta down to the south end. For water transfers, there's a very active water market, where you have rice farmers that are north of the Delta, that they pay maybe $20 an acre foot for their water, and they'll put it up for sale on the market, $200, $300, $400 an acre foot, which is a bargain. But when you move it through the Delta today, you have to take a 20% loss, so you're giving away 20% of that water that you're moving. With the tunnels, you'll be able to guarantee 100% delivery of the water. So, this really is for reliability, it's for good plumbing, it's to once and for all fix the state water project, and it's a very affordable amount.
Well, thank you. I wish we'd actually asked you to make a presentation down here today.
I'd be more than happy to come back if you'd like to, and one of the reasons why we're asking for your support, every community that we've asked in Orange County to support this has signed on, whether they have a water department or not. There are a couple that are still, they're a little slow, they're, they're working on getting it through. County Board of Supervisors, they voted to endorse the project. Of our congressional delegation, Mr. Royce, Mrs. Walters, Mr. Isa, Mr. Rohrbacher, and Mr. Correa, signed a letter in support of this. And Mr. Lowenthal wanted to do his own, and he's not produced that letter yet, but he has also been very supportive. John Morlock, Senator John Morlock, is supportive of this. Matt Harper's been supportive of this. Bill Bro, Stephen Choi, this kind of is a universally supported project.
But some, some major water departments have come out against it, correct? Said they're not going to participate?
Well, you're, okay, this, this is where it gets a little confusing. So, you have two different players. You have the state water project players and the CVP, the Central Valley Project, those are the federal players. On the state side, they're responsible for 55% of the cost, and so Metropolitan has signed on, and we officially voted for that last week. Kern County Water Agency, they signed on for it. Coachella Valley Water District, they signed on for it. Tomorrow, Santa Clara Water Agency is going to be supporting it. So, with those agencies, that's roughly 80% of those responsible for the cost on the state water project. So, the state water project side, that 55, 55% of those shares are all subscribed to and taken care of. Westlands Water District is probably what you're referring to. They're a very large agricultural district, and they're a Central Valley Project federal player. They've been really frustrated that the feds have refused to pay their share. The Bureau of Reclamation is supposed to participate in 20% of the cost share, and they're saying they're not, the Obama administration said they would not participate in that. So, they're frustrated about that. The Frye Water District has a deal going back to 1939 that says they don't have to pay for anything, even though they receive significant benefits for it. So, there are some discussions with that. I think ultimately, Westlands will come back in, but they were the first ones out of the chute. Initially, Metropolitan was going to vote on this back in September. Westlands had scheduled their vote a week later. I think had Metropolitan voted in favor in September, Westlands would have been more apt to support it. They didn't want to be the first, so they took a pass. I believe they're just using this as a negotiating ploy, they'll come back, and they'll come to the table. By the time this is all over, I would guess probably 80% of those shares will be fully subscribed to, with 20% remaining, and then you may, may see agencies like Metropolitan or other agencies say, you know, "We're willing to invest more for that reliability." As someone in the water business, it would be worth the entire $17 billion investment for Southern California to make, just to guarantee that reliability. We're not going to have to do that, but it's that important to the lifeblood of Southern California. And in Orange County, the Orange County Water District, which takes care of the groundwater basin in the north part of the county, is becoming more and more dependent on Metropolitan supplemental water. So, Municipal Water District of Orange County, I also serve on that board, we did a study to determine the reliability long-term. With the Delta fix, we're reliable nine out of 10 years under any scenario. Absent a Delta fix, we're reliable three out of 10 years. And the reason I say that is in 1980, we were receiving 8 million acre feet of water through, from the Sacramento Bay Delta. Whole state water project was delivering that. Today, less than 30 years later, we're receiving roughly 4.5 million acre feet, only, almost a 50% drop, and that's because of regulatory decisions, because of fish decisions, biological opinions, lawsuits, and that's just going to continue to decline until we fix the plumbing, and that's, to me, the best for the Delta itself.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to support the letter.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously, thank you. And item H, Richard.
Yeah, you know, my, my concern with this one is, I just speak to Brett about it today, that this is a necessary emergency repair, but what I was hoping to get was a little bit of the big picture, as to how this, does this fit into any, any plan that we have so far, or what are the, what's the timing to have a plan? You know, one of the two, either, either way you want to answer.
Yeah, I mean, this is really a standalone project to take care of the roof over at the community center, but it, it is related to the study that we're having JLL do, the two tracks, one with analyzing the hotel feasibility on the site, and the other to do an alternative of what it would cost us to stay here in these facilities, but this particular, this is a standalone item, this is to take care of that part of the roof at the community center. I think, Stephen, if you can give just a little bit of detail on this project itself.
Certainly. Last year with the weather that we had was very unfortunate for that building. That building has a large area on top of it, about the size of this stage, that is indented on the roof and full of HVAC equipment, and that area is basically about a four-foot pool in the middle of a bunch of roof lines that go this way. That pool became flooded and would not drain, and then drained into Corey's building. So, it needs a patch job, and in order to do that patch job, they have to work around all of that equipment that is up there, and it's going to take a long time. And the water that came from that flood damaged the ceilings in both his kitchen and his bathrooms. His bathrooms are unusable, and because of the mold issue in the bathrooms, so we want to get the roof repaired, get the bathrooms repaired, and get them reopened for the public. And so, this is just a Band-Aid based on the damage from last year. We haven't done it all year long, we've tried to work on this, and hopefully, we got, we were trying to get some good initial pricing from some contractors. We were all in the $17,000 mark, so we knew we had to go out to formal bid, so we had to slow down and go out to formal bid. This is the first step of going out to formal bid, is getting city council to approve the specs. But this in no way or shape changes the view of the, of the ultimate position of where the city hall it goes in the future. This is just a Band-Aid for a building temporarily.
Do you know, any idea how long these repairs will last?
We'll probably get about three or four years out of this.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We're hoping for more, but the way that building designed, it's an architect's dream, but not a roofer's dream. It is a really interesting situation up there, with all the roof lines in this flat area full of equipment. So, every time they're screwing in or mounting a new piece of equipment, you're jeopardizing that membrane.
Okay. And Brett, one last question. What is the overall timing, then, with the group, with the plan to look at the big picture?
Well, I mean, we're still hoping to come back first quarter. We have the subcommittee, Councilmember Kusamoto, Councilmember Wilson, we've got the two-track plan where JLL is out doing the analysis of the hotel feasibility and the analysis of the infrastructure and the civic center needs here. So, Stephen, can you give any update, the most recent study or portion of the study that they've done, they've come out and they've gone and done a visual inspection?
Yeah.
Pretty detailed inspection of all of our sites.
The deferred maintenance, the deferred maintenance report is expected in a couple of weeks. The hotel, we should get a rough draft this year, this week, which will be a draft that Brett and I look at, find errors or falsities, send it back to them to polish up and give back to us. We should have that the end of this week. So, we, the subcommittee was aiming at the close of the year, and I think we'll get there.
Okay, thank you. If nobody else has anything, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, on to public hearings. So, item A, that one, that is the ordinance number 2017-09, and I'll go ahead and give staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have Stephen Mendoza, Development Services Director, do the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Marijuana comes in kind of two categories, if you remember. First, we had, we had medical marijuana, and now we have recreational marijuana about to be legalized in the state of California. In order to protect our city from some of, from the state issuing permits in our city for a, a business to cultivate or a business to sell as a retail, or even for delivery, we drafted our own ordinance to supervise, not to, I guess, to supplement what the state is doing. So, before you today is a ordinance that the planning commission has looked at, to make sure it protects the city in the way that the city council intended when it first asked the city attorney to draft this. So, what this ordinance does, it...
So what this ordinance does, it controls medical, I'm sorry, recreational marijuana, does not allow you to sell it in Los Alamos in a storefront, does not allow you to cultivate it in a business, and doesn't allow you to deliver as a business. What it does not intercede with is your personal use in your own resident of up to six plants. That is still allowed. We're not trying to get involved in a person's ability to do that as the state, new state law will allow. And I think that's it. It is a public hearing, so you'd have to open the public hearing, take any public testimony, and then make any modifications or adjustments as you deem appropriate. This would be a first hearing. There'll be a second reading in a month, and then this ordinance would take effect 30 days after that.
Right. At this time, I'll open it up for public comments. And seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for any comments here. Any comments?
One of the things that we did add, I did attend a webinar, participated in a webinar based on this, and one of the things we did do, and we have legal jurisdiction to be able to do this, to add to our ordinance, is that any renter would have to have approval of the property owner in order to cultivate their six plants in the rented property. So I just thought we were trying, we want to do our due diligence. A lot of property owners rent out their apartments or their homes, and they're not necessarily active or at their property a lot, so I just wanted to be able to give them the notification that what was going on on their own property that they would be legally responsible for.
And with that, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And?
Motion is for adoption of ordinance number 2017-09 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, deleting Chapter 17.39 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code in its entirety, and adding a new Chapter 17.39 relating to medical and adult-use cannabis, and adopting a prohibition of all commercial cannabis activities in the city, and imposing regulations for personal cultivation of cannabis, and additionally amending Tables 2-02, 2-04, and 2-06 to reflect the same."
All in favor?
Aye.
11B, ordinance number 2017-08. City Attorney, I'll let you read.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, I have the Development Services Director again, Stephen Mendoza, do the staff report.
Thank you, Brett. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. This is ordinance that helps us get in line with state law regarding accessory dwelling units. For years, cities have had laws regarding second dwelling units, or granny flats, or guest houses, something you would put as a detached unit in your backyard. This year, the governor signed a bill which prohibited cities from developing zoning codes to prevent these things. So this, the Governor Brown signed Assembly Bill 2299 and Senate Bill 1069 as it relates to second dwelling units. What it basically does now is, a city cannot have a public hearing to try and dissuade somebody from having a second dwelling unit in their, in their yard. They can't have the decision about a second dwelling be taken by a board or the city council. So it can't be subject to Planning Commission review or city council review. It is subject to a ministerial review, or I like to say administrative review. So the review would be based on the planning department's review, that it meets the laws and setbacks and physical development standards that we're establishing here. The state is tying our hands in how much we can regulate these units, and some people would like to say that he's basically creating R2 zones out of R1 zones in every city in California. And some people would be right. Our counter has not been inundated with requests for this, but my colleagues in Garden Grove have had 40 applications already in West Garden Grove. In that city, the realtors are using it as a selling point for some properties that have big backyards. In Los Alamos, we haven't seen that, but we expect to see some of that. This ordinance goes as far as the city can go in regulating accessory dwelling units. And it also cleans up our code in other areas regarding second dwelling units and granny flats, kind of removes that other jargon that we had in our code. And anybody who wants a residential unit in their backyard is now just called an accessory dwelling unit. They may use their own lingo when they come to the counter, but we'll always steer them towards calling it an ADU. Now, this is a big issue in California, a big issue in Southern California. All the attorneys are talking, all the community developers, development directors are talking, and we're basically all writing ordinances that take it as far as we can. And we believe we have an ordinance in front of you tonight that takes us as far as it can in trying to keep some sense of local control on a topic that the governor's stripping local control from. With that, the ordinance is in front of you. This has passed through the Planning Commission. They did a public hearing at their meeting last month, took public testimony. There wasn't a lot in favor or against it. They had been primed about it and educated about it for months before that, and so we wanted to make sure that they were prepared for it coming down the pipe. I'm sure you've seen it at the league and through some of the publications that you've read. We hope we've done something that helps address the issues we may have in the city, and if not, we'll come back and ask for a revision of it. But this is the ordinance that we've prepared, and hopefully we'll be able to make Los Alamos remain as quiet as it can be, and the bedroom community that it is today. With that, it is a public hearing, so I would recommend you open the public hearing, take any public testimony, and then close the public hearing and act on the motion.
Thank you. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. And seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for any comments or questions.
Yeah, I just had a question. So we talked about the most of the two. These are the minimum standards that we need to reach in order to satisfy the requirement under the new.
Yeah, and you do it with caution. There could be someone that comes out and says, hey, you've pushed the envelope a little too far. So we hope we're not any test city. We hope that somebody chooses another city to choose as their test city if they wanted to sue on an ordinance.
Sounds good. And then the residency requirement, how is that enforced?
Through covenants and deed restrictions. When would they, when you issued the permit, you have them be subject to that permit. They'd have to record this document that says that they live in one of them.
Okay. And then the last question I had on there, too, regarding the local restriction, cannot basically enforce additional parking requirements on these accessory dwelling units, this only, it would only apply for specifically these areas? And it's not anything that would apply citywide or any other resoning?
Well, R1 is pretty citywide. It touches almost every neighborhood that you could think of besides the R2 and R3 zones.
Okay.
The R2 is Old Town East, and the R3 is Apartment Row, and then you have Old Town West as R3 as well. So this would be suburbia. This would be all those single-family detached neighborhoods that we have in the city. Some are bigger than others. Some will lend themselves to these kind of developments more than others, though.
Gotcha. All right. Another first question.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Yes, so thank you. So besides the accessory dwelling units, the granny flats in the back, it also applies to garages, right? One can convert garages. And then I think to Councilmember Wilson's question on public transport, if it's within a one-mile radius of this, of the accessory dwelling unit, which is pretty much anywhere in the city, it applies. So it, yeah, when you read the law, it really strips away a lot of local control, and it just puts a lot of things out there with it. It could potentially be impacting the neighborhoods, especially when you start converting garages or spare bedrooms into rental units. Because one of the things, I guess, it used to be where you had to have running water, hot and cold running water. I think it strips all that away. It's not necessary anymore for those things. Is that correct?
They would have to have a kitchen and bathroom.
I didn't read the law that way. I read it that you didn't have to have that, that we couldn't enforce that. So that's the way I read the law. So anyways, it'll be real interesting to see how this plays out.
Richard.
More of a statement, you know, it's just, it's a very sad irony. The state is killing housing with regulation and taxation, and at the same time turns around and tells us we can't do anything in our own neighborhood to live the life we want to live. It's frankly ridiculous, but it's the law.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. I've watched this over the years. You know, it's funny how we kind of formally and informally enforce things in the city. You know, staff talked about, you know, we basically would subject it to a hearing, you know, that they would have to kind of come through, and because of the hearing, then basically all the neighbors would get notices, and it would basically, you know, we'd facilitate a process of really neighbor-on-neighbor, it felt like. You know, I hate these top-down force moves, but, you know, I can also see a little bit of, you know, there's a lot of problems in their county on affordable housing, and I'm not taking the position of, you know, the governor in passing this, but I think there's a little small sliver of, you know, we've got to find a way to try to find ways for housing, and the homelessness problem, and families that are trying to maintain within a domicile. I think that the deed restrictions and some of the things that are actually applicable in this help. And I think my first reaction was fight it. And then I watched our Planning Commission maturely handle this and listen to what the facts of this were. And then I realized, because we got a bunch of smart people on that commission, that, you know, they exhausted themselves. They didn't, you know, they didn't think, oh, man, we're going to start over and just do something totally, you know, fight this thing. And I think it helped temper my response. So I'd have to say, I think the Planning Commission did a good job in kind of breaking this down a little bit for us, and Steve, I think you and your staff, you know, I'm not a big fan of it. I see the reasons why we're doing it. But, you know, let's think a little bit, too, what is the cost of the quality of life in Los Al? You know, if it's your mom living in the backyard of your house, that's probably okay. But if it's a bunch of people that build stuff and have renters living in their backyards, and you've got all these cars, pretty soon you've got these really nice neighborhoods that we all live in that have people walking in and out from the back. And I think that's what we've always tried to protect within our city and formally. And, you know, I think at this point, it's a law, and like you said, Richard, I think we just, on this one, you know, we've done the best we can, and I think both at the commission and our level, talking about it with the community, having this dialogue, at least lets the community know what's coming. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
And just pigging back into other comments, I think one of the ways we could possibly regulate this to some extent is with our residential parking program, where a residence gets so many street parking permits, since there isn't a requirement to have the onsite parking if they add two more bedrooms to a garage. It's, I'm just trying to think a little bit creatively out of the box, not getting rid of this error or going against it by any means, but somehow keeping our neighborhoods quiet and not six and seven cars per residence because of this ordinance that we have no control over. So with that, do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second. And City Attorney, can you read it in full, please?
The ordinance before you is ordinance number 2017-08 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, approving zoning ordinance amendment 17-01 to repeal and replace the Los Alamos Municipal Code, Section 17.38.150 relating to accessory dwelling units and residential zones of the city, as well as to make changes to Table 3-01 in Section 17.26.040 and Table 2.02 of Section 17.08.020 to comply with new state legislation."
All in favor?
Aye.
I've seen.
And item C, this is, let's see, 3621 Fenley Drive.
So I recuse myself. I have a conflict. I live within 500 feet of this residence, so I must recuse myself.
And we'll go ahead and get a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is another item that has previously been discussed by the Planning Commission and Development Services Director, Stephen Mendoza. We'll go over the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At 3621 Fenley Drive, there's a, actually, and his neighbors, there's a number of properties that have a second piece of land behind their homes. They, it's a remnant piece from when the river was more flat and wider. The riverbed then became improved, concreted in, and then the, then the water district, not the water district, but the flood control district had remnant parcels. So those parcels were given over to these property owners long ago, but they were zoned differently. They were zoned open space. So you have your front property, which is zoned R1, and then you have your back property, which is OA. Until that line is removed between the two properties, and they have the exact same zoning, you can't cross that property line, even with a gas line for a barbecue. So you couldn't do a detached garage, you couldn't do a gas line, because it can't cross a property line in the city of Los Alamos, and most cities. So there's been one property who was able to obtain approval from the city to change their zoning years ago, and now a second property owner is trying to do that same thing. He's been through the Planning Commission, and now he's on to the city council with both a general plan amendment and a zoning ordinance change for his back parcel. But that would bring in his back parcel aligned with his front parcel, and allow him to do more with his backyard if he so wishes in the future. He bought Tom Rothwell's house, if you remember Tom's big, large backyard. It was actually two parcels. And so this brings that in line. So he's filed the necessary application, and he's received the approval from the Planning Commission. Now he's taking the plant, the application towards the city council for consideration. Because it's a general plan amendment, it has a resolution, and because it's a zoning ordinance, it has an ordinance. So the zoning ordinance can't go until the resolution for the general plan amendment can go, and then neither of them are effective until he does the lot line adjustment, removing the property line between the two. So if he never splits the lot line, this isn't effective. Okay? So he has to follow up on that next step. And that's how we've written this law. So what you have is, again, a public hearing for someone to change the back, the zoning of their back property to match the zoning of their front property. He's not the first one to do it. The Planning Commission additionally recognized that there may be four or five other properties that are in need of cleanup, so they've asked city staff to survey those property owners to see if they're interested in doing the same process. With that, this is a public hearing. I would recommend you open the public hearing. The Blooms couldn't be here tonight. It's his wife's birthday, and he was afraid he'd get in trouble if he came here, and he had the backing of the Planning Commission, so he was hoping he wouldn't have to be here tonight. So with that, I would recommend opening the public hearing.
Thank you. And we will open up for public comments. And seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Do you have any comments up here? Anybody? Do I have? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So Commission, Planning Commission kind of ordered or asked staff to survey other college park neighborhoods in terms of if any other properties fit this category. Was that completed, included at all?
There's, there's five other properties, and we haven't sent the letter out yet. We're just about to. They just gave us the direction two weeks ago.
Okay. Do you need a recommendation for here? Because I would personally like to see this all taken care of, every property owner. I'm assuming he paid a fee for his application?
Yes, he did.
So if we could save the fee for the other five parcels on there for doing the same thing?
And I think that's the way the Planning Commission felt as well.
Okay. So then I would provide the direction if we need so, but just done.
Okay.
With that, other comments?
Any comments? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second. And do you need to read this?
Thank you very much. The ordinance before you is ordinance number 2017-10 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, approving zoning ordinance amendment 17-02 to change the zoning district for a 10,488 square foot parcel from open area to single-family residential for a parcel to the rear of 3621 Fenley Drive, APN 242-301-52."
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Can we bring Warren back in, or is he eating dinner?
He left.
Okay. There is a 12A, correct? Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to discussion item for the organic waste recycling services update.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is a follow-up item. We've discussed this at the last couple of meetings. We received direction from the city council to follow up and have done so, so we will give you an update, and I'll have Michael Dowd, the city attorney, is going to do the staff report, and we'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. As Brett mentioned, this item was before you at your regular meeting of September 18th, 2017, wherein you count, wherein you considered a proposal from Republic Services, the city's franchise waste hauler, to provide state-mandated AB 1826 organic waste recycling services to the city. They had negotiated a rate of $129,444 per year. After discussion of the item, the council directed staff to solicit other waste haulers within the area to determine whether or not they, too, would be interested in providing price proposals to provide similar services within the jurisdiction. in providing price proposals to provide similar services within the jurisdiction. So following the meeting, the city manager mailed a request for letters of interest to five waste haulers, which were CRNR, Universal Waste Systems, Valley Vista Services, Ware Disposal, and Waste Management. Of these potential vendors, we did receive a response back from one of them, which was Ware Disposal, who has confirmed via a letter of interest that they would indeed be interested in submitting a proposal to the city to provide the state-mandated organic waste recycling services. This matter is brought back to you tonight to get further direction in terms of the path forward. Staff has worked together to identify four potential outcomes or directions. Those options are listed in your staff report. The first possible option could be to accept the negotiated proposal pricing from Republic Services as presented to the council at the September 18th, 2017 meeting. Second option would be to direct the city manager to further negotiate proposal pricing with Republic Services for the provision of the state-mandated program. Third option would be to direct the city manager to solicit a proposal from and enter into negotiations with Ware Disposal for provision of the desired services. And then a fourth option that has been identified would be to direct the city manager to solicit a proposal from Ware Disposal and enter into concurrent negotiations with both Ware Disposal and Republic Services to provide the services needed.
Thank you. This is a discussion item, but I will reopen it for public comments if there are any other comments on this.
I did speak in open form. Again, this is John Benfoni. I have commercial property 3561 Howard Avenue. Again, I just want to reiterate the fact, I do not think that those are the four issues that should be brought up to the city council. I think that one of the other options is to simply have a recycling program and not necessarily contract on behalf of those commercial properties that are required to comply with the state law. I do not think that the city council here's desire is to broaden the scope of the state law and mandate it on 600 entities when only 11 or five or seven or whatever that arbitrary number are required to comply with the recycling program. I don't think it's fair. And so I don't think that's the proper course. I think you should consider other things that are less intrusive and put the responsibility, as the law states, back on those entities who are actually creating the waste and not taking the responsibility upon yourselves as city council. I think you can create a program that frees you of some of this liability and responsibility for contracting. And I think that if you do undergo this particular direction, I think you should do that proportionate. And that means not mandating an 8.2% across 600 entities, but go ahead and attributing those on a proportional basis to those who are actually creating the waste, whether it's organic or solid in 2019. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I'll go ahead and close it and bring it back to council. Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
So Brett, I'd ask you a bunch of questions about what other cities are charging their generators of organic waste. And you kind of gave me the feedback saying you need direction from this council in order to proceed. But you are right now a representative at the county level on the, can you give me the title of that one, the trash?
Orange County Waste Commission.
So, and so with being a commissioner on that, it does not give you the insight as to what other municipalities are charging their generators of organic waste?
It's, we get feedback. We have talked to other communities. We did attend, Stephen and I attended a, kind of a mini seminar that was put on by the city of Anaheim with all of the cities that have Republic as their waste hauler as well to get, to continue to get an idea. They've had a consultant working with them.
So to cut to the question, and so do you know how much they're charging residents of Anaheim in terms of?
It's all over the board. I mean, what the presentation was, was a consultant that was working on behalf of Anaheim and some other cities to try to negotiate with Republic rate increases that would be reasonable, comparable to what we've done with Mike Vallier here.
So anecdotally, what I've heard Stanton, who has implemented a organic waste recycling program, does not charge their businesses any additional fee?
Stanton has, CRNR is their provider, their waste hauler provider, and they negotiated through their extension of their waste hauler agreement, an agreement because they do have an organic waste facility, and they have been able to pass that along to their customers based on the negotiation, their franchise agreement itself.
Would it be fair to then to categorize all CRNR customers that generate organic waste do not get charged extra? Would it be fair to characterize it that way?
I don't think so. I think if we, you know, we have Mike Vallier here. I think he could answer that question better than I can. I think it varies depending on each city and the waste hauler agreement that they have, the franchise agreement that they have.
So a potential customer, city customer, well, let's take the high school. I think they are, they use CRNR?
They use Ware, from what I've heard.
They use Ware, okay. They don't use CRNR?
No.
Rossmore does.
Rossmore does? Oh, yeah. But that's county. So we don't know what the county does and how they might.
Yeah. And CRNR was, as Michael mentioned, was one of the five that we did send the letter out to see if there's an interest, and they did not respond.
I understand. But again, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, the mandate, right? And I'll kind of give you my viewpoint. The same thing with the fats and the oils that are left over from restaurants that get collected, that doesn't get dumped down the drain. It gets put into some kind of a container outside there. We do not regulate that as a, as a city. We don't, right? I mean, and so yet the business that generates such of a waste product has to deal with it. And they have to contract with somebody to come by and collect it, and then they take it off to some place that gets rendered and put into something usable, maybe biodiesel or whatever, who knows? But to me, the organic waste is in the same category. We ought not to step in the middle of those that generate the organic waste and have to deal with it according to the state law. And as I read the question and answer from Cal Recycle, it just, it simply says that. We do not, we do not have to provide the service or franchise it out. We just regulate, you know, manage and provide information. So with that, I mean, if, you know, again, how much effort will it take to figure out how many different cities are charging their businesses, the generators of organic waste? How much effort would that take on your part and your staff's part?
I think it's difficult to even identify the scope of that request. I think it's, apples to apples is very difficult from what I've learned and studied and understand and speaking with Mike Vallier. It's, that would be a really difficult analysis to do. I think, for example, we have the one letter that we received from Ware, and one of the options here is the potential to go out and negotiate with Ware. That in itself would be a difficult comparison of apples to apples with what Republic has already given a proposal. I mean, we could do that. And if that's the direction from the council, if that's where we go, Mike is here to be able to explain how we would send out a request to get a bid from Ware. But it's, it's just not apples to apples comparison. It's very difficult to go out and just, and get those, that information in the same format.
Okay. So when you say apples to apples on a per commercial account basis, is that the difficulty?
Well, let me have Michael. Mike Vallier, can you come up and?
But it's really, the question is, in aggregate, right, a city contracts out with a waste hauler, and then the city has this mandate, right, that says you shall collect organic waste and treat it properly in a, whatever, some kind of a digester. And there's a cost. And it seems in the aggregate, that'd be a fairly easy question to get answered. What is it costing the city of Anaheim in aggregate? Is that, is that an unfair question, sir?
No. In some cities, it's easy, and some it's not. For example, the allocation of costs amongst all rate payers. Some cities negotiated a new franchise agreement with their trash hauler, and they knew they would have to provide all these programs. So the rate that they charged had that knowledge prior.
So, but that's not my, that's not my question.
But you're not letting me finish my answer. They are spreading the cost amongst all the rate players because they had a knowledge of what hoop they had to jump through. You're in a different situation in that you negotiated and established all your rates, and now a new program has come along. Also, with the CRNR model, they do have a mixed waste processing system that charges a higher per ton rate because they sort through everything without segregating it. So again, the answer can be reasonably presented to council, but there is a bit of devil in the details that you would want along with those rates. For example, Laguna Woods, one of the cities that I work with, has a very low per container charge for organic waste recycling, but that contract just started in January of 2016, and the hauler knew that they were going to have to offer that program competitively. So I would argue there's probably some coverage in their standard trash rate. So it's, I'm not trying to be evasive. I'm just saying it's not a clear apples to apples comparison in all 34 cities.
I imagine Laguna Woods doesn't have the same level of commercial accounts that we might have in this city. I just don't think it's there. I mean, just, you know, if I'm kind of thinking like a leisure world.
Yeah, it's 150 or so business entities. So you're a little bit bigger.
Yeah. So, so if you have a cost that's known prior to the mandate, and then a, however you amortize it across 150, whatever, all the generators across every rate payer, there's a number that adds up, right? And that, to me, would be a very interesting number to know, because then we at least have some comparison, right?
Well, I think in fairness, that data, along with the total commercial rate, what people are paying for their trash service, for their mandated AB-341, the recycling that's mandated, and the organics altogether, because again, they're going to apportion their costs to be profitable overall as a hauling company, and maybe not looking at just a particular rate category. That's my opinion.
I understand. So, but again, with all the pieces, it seems to me to be fairly straightforward to say, this is the cost or the charges prior to the institution of the mandate. This is the charge total, however it gets amortized, against which, which class of user gets benefited or penalized, depending on how you want to look at the ledger there. It seems to be, that'd be a fairly straightforward answer. And not an apples to oranges or that type of thing. It's really an apples to apples. It was pre and post. I mean, is it, is it that hard, Brett?
I think it is that hard. I think it's a difficult thing to do the apples to apples comparison. It's not a very, it's not straight even across the board, as Mike was explaining.
Okay. And then so, in the span of one hearing, you want us to, I'll say, take on a $129,000 fee across 700 commercial accounts on a very complex subject that we get maybe half hour to talk about? I mean, if it's that complex, I think we need a little more education, like we've been asking for. Well, I'll think of other questions, but I'll back to the mayor.
Richard? Yeah. I also think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here with presenting these options today. I think there are some legitimate questions of what are our responsibilities? Is it just to educate and then facilitate a program, or are we supposed to run a program? I don't think the city wants to take on any responsibility it doesn't have to. Now, I do recognize that this bill, it kind of reminds me of the way taxation used to be done 25 years ago. The Congress would pass a bill and then let, let the Treasury Department make the regulations. So that meant that five guys in a room made the regulations, and whatever the original intent was, didn't come out of that room. Whatever those five guys wanted, that became the law. And this is, this feels like the same thing. Here, the state has said, here's the law, and now we're trying to figure out, okay, what do they mean? And I believe we're a little early with the pilot project. My suggestion would be a workshop that perhaps run by Mr. Vallier, where we explain the law, try and invite all the interested, all the parties that are going to be affected. I have trouble with the idea that the state passes a law that affects 11 entities, and then we take it upon ourselves to spread that to 600 entities. You know, what should really happen in my mind is those 11 entities should be using their lobbying influences or whatever governmental suggestion they can make to get a law that they can live with. But why the, it's the city's responsibility to pass this on to everybody else, I don't understand.
Well, if I could, despite what the advisory memo may or may not say, Public Resources Code 42649.82A1 says, "In addition to these requirements, on or after January 1st, 2016, each jurisdiction shall implement an organic waste recycling program that is appropriate for that jurisdiction and designed specifically to divert organic waste generated by businesses subject to this section." So again, what type of program you adopt is completely up to the council. But just saying, well, we just need to educate. This was January 1st, 2016. So we are now into 2017, and the city hasn't formally adopted a program. So I still stand by my counsel at the last presentation that I think if you go too long before selecting a program, the state may, may not look favorably on it. Again, the legislation, I think, wasn't well thought out of. There's not sufficient infrastructure currently in place. I think the state would admit that for this program, for people to go out and pick a supplier. The businesses in this community that are under this mandate can't easily contract for this service. That's why so many cities are defaulting to their franchise hauler and requiring them to develop a program and a cost structure so that they can be compliant with this section that's specific to your city, that you need to adopt a program specifically to divert this organic waste. So again, the recommendation to go with spreading the rate across, that's a judgment call on the council, definitely. The argument for spreading the rate would be if you're expecting just 11 rate payers to incur that cost, they're probably not going to implement the program. And then is the state going to, and it's rulemaking, which is continuing and ongoing, decide that you didn't make a reasonable effort to put a program in place that people would accept? That's the argument for spreading the rate. Again, whether, whether or not the state is going to do that, nobody knows. It's being implemented, and they're judging it as it's written to see how much waste they actually divert from the landfill. And theoretically, they can bring the air resources board in and strengthen the standards. So again, I don't envy the council's position in having to make this call, and I'm certainly not telling you one is right and one is wrong. I am sticking by the original assessment that it's easiest to go with your hauler because in 2019, despite the figures we've heard, you'll have over 200 businesses that will have over four cubic yards of trash and will have to have a program. So that would be the argument for actually getting a program in place, seeing what it actually costs to perform the program, what the pluses and minuses of it are, so that when January of 2019 rolls around, this body is very familiar and able to make an appropriate decision on a more widespread rate. And with that, I'll get off my speech box. Sorry.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, a few questions. So I guess, just to address the speaker's comment earlier, to your point, the program is required to need to be in place. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to address the speaker's comments.
Well, and again, I've been a small business owner for years and years. I'm not crazy about a lot of the things that we have to do in the state. But again, you have a mandate that is upon these businesses, but again, they don't, they're not able to individually contract with a trash hauler. You get a franchise agreement to give them better rates as a whole. So again, now that you have this new program that's an unfunded mandate foisted upon you, you have to make the tough call. How do we best make this program a success? And again, speaking to the numbers, you have 163 businesses right now with four cubic yards or more of trash service per week. January 2019, they'll all be under the mandate. You have 48 multifamily units of five, multifamily buildings of five units or more. They will have to have a program for their green waste and their non-hazardous wood waste. They're exempt from the food waste piece, but there's another 48 that will have to have some type of program. You, as a city, also have to educate these folks every year and also send them a notice if they're not complying. So again, the state's requirement on the city is to adopt a program, to educate and to monitor. And they leave it up to you exactly what you want that program to be. But I think it has to be some type of option where a person that wants to recycle their organics has somebody that the city says they can do, or you can have them. has somebody that the city says they can do, or you can have them, you know, self-haul it to the Pointy Hills Murph. But again, that's that qualitative aspect that I really don't know when and how the state's going to rule on that if you have a program that's cost prohibitive or so inconvenient that businesses won't participate.
I understand. So to the point of the complication of the issue is that we are, in a sense, taking a risk about whether AQMD or the state will calm down if we don't implement this and we slow-roll this. And while I was going to ask if this is the minimum to comply with the law, it doesn't sound like it is in the sense that we want to offer a solution that can satisfy them to not bring the ire or attention of the state agency on us, but also enough words to equitable and fair for all those concerned. I really see us doing two ways. Personally, for me, is that if we are known that this is going to progress, multi-years are going to go by, more businesses, and eventually multifamily units are going to be part of this, is that we either go for a program like this proportional. So if it's eleven people that are affected by this, but take it to the nth degree, all those eleven, there's not a quality amongst all of those. So while the school district may generate ninety percent of that eleven, the rest of the ten percent could be amongst those ten and other individuals. So is it fair to then spread and amortize that cost over those elevens while they're not even generating that as proportional waste? So either take it to that extreme, or you take it to the opposite extreme and you say, I guess the question is, do you know how many rate payers we have, residential and commercial, in the city?
I think you have six hundred roughly, commercial rate payers, and that would include your, your multifamily properties. Residential, I think you're a shade under two thousand, nineteen hundred, some rate payers.
So we're at a hundred and sixty thousand for the program, correct?
Hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four forty-four.
So then you divide that by twenty-six hundred. So I'd say, you, you'd have, in a sense, that you, that the residences would also be patronizing these businesses and generating that, and you hope that the cost amortized over every single person that's affected by the city, I'm advocating for this, but to the opposite side, would also generate the waste and have a say in that, and you'd hopefully par down the cost as much as possible to have that. I can be convinced either way, but I think either way, it has to be fair and equitable for all the people that are concerned. And if we are going to choose to charge these eleven businesses, if that program wants to be impacted, it really needs proportional for how much waste they actually generate.
You know, the one thing that the speaker had talked about, kind of what is the duty of the city? What's the duty of the business? You know, the, the, it was very compelling argument and kind of a point which was, you know, are we overreaching our duty as the city by kind of stepping up and, and kind of taking the jurisdiction of this issue that really is a law that, and maybe I'm off on this, but it seems like the law specifically is to these, these, these businesses, like Warren was saying. When the businesses then have, you know, this to deal with, we kind of step in the middle and say, hey, we're the government, we're here to help. And, and, you know, and then all the other businesses are going, oh crap, I hope they don't step in fully because they're, they're thinking of spreading it to everybody. And it's almost like I'm wondering if we're taking our charge a little too aggressively, you know, because, you know, fairness to staff, fairness to you. I mean, we're, we're really just trying to look at the bigger picture here and try to kind of help out, and we don't want to penalize businesses. Something that maybe even the speaker said, you know, it's not like these businesses can go to the next city because Los Alamos treated them poorly because in Garden Grove or wherever, they'll have the same problem of this, this material having to get rid of. So my, my point and kind of through all of that is, you know, if, if this thing went its natural course to the businesses, and then we took a little bit of some of what was said at the end of the dice with Richard and Warren of having a discussion with the businesses. We had talked about this in the last meeting. And, you know, you pull the eleven in and say, look, guys, this looks pretty bad for you. It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You guys did a great job in negotiating it with the waste hauler. But, you know, split, you know, eleven ways, definitely is going to have an impact of a lot of money. If you guys are a business, a restaurant specifically, operating on the periphery or the margin, you'd be, maybe, you know, hopefully you can clear another ten grand a month, or you're going to be, you know, it's going to be a tough year ahead. And then, you know, so I, I guess what I'm wondering again, and this is just maybe more feeling and emotion than it is fact, is, you know, that this discussion of, this really is a law that is imposed on the businesses. Eventually, we have to provide jurisdiction over it and make sure it happens within our city. But the reality is a business that needs to go to bed at night tonight, worrying about, what am I going to do with this? Us stepping in and imposing it, you know, I think the businesses, those eleven, they're probably appreciative that we're thinking about it, but they may not think we're even taking the right path, so damned at that point. Then they may look and say, okay, great. Well, the good news is, the city's doing what they do, which is not always the best, most effective, but they, but they were actually going to spread it across all six hundred, so, whoo, that was close. And it's almost like a calamity of potential errors or, or problems that I see. So that's where my mind is at. I was just kind of curious, you know, I'm leaning towards kind of dealing with the businesses and trying to have them deal with this and then almost come to us for help. But if, if this is a little too far down that path, help pull me back to where I need to be because that's where I'm at right now.
Again, PRC four-two-six-four-nine-eight-two.
Yeah.
Requires you to adopt a program that's designed specifically to divert it. It says nothing about spreading costs. It says nothing about the likelihood that the businesses is going to afford or it's going to be convenient for them. You simply have to adopt a program. So that's, that's how it's written. Anything else that I'm saying is conjecture on what the state may or may not do based on how much of the fifty percent of the organics that's currently going to landfill is diverted by this program.
Can I ask you a question there, though? So when you say adopt the program, and again, I'm just going to overpick on the speaker. You know, he, you know, he read through the regulations and, and I've read it too, and I know Warren's definitely into the hardcore reading of, you know, it does seem like it's a lot of just put a program in place, make sure you communicate to the businesses, make sure you've identified where the places are, you can get rid of it. The actual engaging a waste hauler and doing some of this stuff, I, I didn't see the wording in there.
Well, again, I, I read legislation a lot. I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-one. And as it progresses through, it talks about the, the city adopting an ordinance or franchising through its hauler program. And then it also speaks to what businesses can do until the city does one of those actions. So again, the thing that's specific is four-two-six-four-nine-eight-two, where it says you, you need to adopt a program specifically to divert this material. Now, you could argue, hey, Pointy Hills Murph will take your stuff, take it there, that's our program. And wait until the state comes down and says, you know what, Los Almitos, that's not good enough. You need to do more. Will they find you for doing that? I don't think so. But again, the, the, doing the minimum to get around what they've foisted upon you is definitely one strategy. The other is, well, how do we do a program that's going to be effective and, and meet this goal? And cities are on both ends of the spectrum in this state. So again, it's, it's not an easy position, and I'm certainly not going to sit here and tell you you're, you're going to get in trouble if you don't do A, B, or C. But you, you, I think it would be wise for you to move forward and show progress given that the date that the state wanted you to select the program was January first of two thousand sixteen. So again, as I said last time, I really wouldn't let it roll into two thousand and eighteen without selecting something. I think that would be pushing it a little far.
Could you see an administrative path where crafted through this council, we put together the administrative response, which is, I'm being facetious, but we're pointing to the landfill in La Puente. We're basically telling the businesses, you, you guys need to get your stuff squared away. And, you know, in all seriousness, you're, you're going to be the ones that are going to pay the penalties. You know, we're going to, we're going to get checked off, and it may be a loose check, but we're going to get checked off. We put a program in place. But, you know, we could have helped you now, but, you know, you need help yourself. And then let this thing germinate through two thousand twenty, see how they do. Because in the end, if they don't do anything and it doesn't work out, we've checked it off at the city. We haven't penalized the other five hundred businesses that are kind of in the periphery. And then potentially the, the burden then at that point, that business is going to have two to three years to plan their business problem, either to go out of business or to find ways to cut costs or to take it serious. But it puts the responsibility back on the business. And, and by, by the way, it didn't go past me that by two thousand sixteen, we should have had something done. I, I see that. But I'm trying to think if there would be, I'd like to try to get to an action up here that would be, you know, reasonable, but kind of a wake-up call to the businesses, but, but making sure that the city's doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Well, and, and again, it's, it's a hard situation because you, you have a hauler that's got a program. And they lowered their cost figure down forty percent to try to make it as economical as they can, granted only providing service to eleven people. So it's not an ideal scenario right now. But January of two thousand nineteen is not too far away, and that's when it'll be a couple hundred people that you're dealing with. And that's when I think you'll, you'll probably, you can kick the can down the road, so to speak, until that point in time. And at that point in time, I think you would, in, in retrospect, like to have had some information on, on the program and its costs. Now, maybe you can do that by seeing if, if your hauler will give a per-business charge. Just if one or two want the program, they, they may or may not. You could, as the, one of the items is, see what, where disposal would charge if one or two wants to do that. Again, I, I know, because I just asked this question for another jurisdiction, they take their material to the Pointy Hills Murph that they collect, and that's a slightly higher per-ton fee than was worked into the cost for your business. But again, it wasn't including developing all the infrastructure to grow a program. So again, it's kind of like squeezing a balloon. You, you say, okay, this is what I'm going to do, and then you have all these consequences around it. So again, it's not an easy, easy choice. I, I think the one that cities are defaulting to in Orange County is going through their franchise hauler because that tends to be the best long-term solution. It's not always the fairest or the easiest in the short term.
And then, Brett, the last question I have here is the, our franchise agreement right now with Republic, when does that expire? Because it's something that they had talked about earlier with being able to price it into the future rate. And between now and when.
Two thousand twenty-one.
So we're two years after, sir. Okay. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Um, the, the proposal received from Republic for the hundred and twenty-nine thousand, is that year-to-year? Is that a multi-year per-year charge?
That's the negotiated total cost of the implementation of the pilot program.
Per year, and then next year we renegotiate, and the year after that we renegotiate?
No, we, we look at, in the pilot program, we reevaluate based on actual costs in about a twelve-month period. And it's, it's intended to get us to January two thousand nineteen, when many more commercial customers have to be onboard.
So this hundred and twenty-nine thousand is purely for these eleven businesses right now?
It's the total cost of implementation of the program. It's the eleven.
Or the eleven businesses?
Yep.
Okay. Because I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of all over the place on this, but the, the mandate is for the businesses to recycle, requiring businesses to recycle their organic waste and for the cities to implement a program, and as you said, it's to adopt, educate, and monitor. So.
Also to adopt a program specifically to divert the, the waste. Again, if you look at the, the code, that's where the city's requirement is, to adopt whatever your program's going to be.
Right, and we, as Warren said, there's the program for the grease, for the restaurants that, you know, we, we adopt, we educate, we monitor. We're, we're not involved with it. The rate is directly to the businesses that are involved with that. So Hofstadt pays that fee and, you know, the Bixby Carpets does not.
Right, and the challenge is the state's now added a, a bunch of other organic waste to that definition of what they must have a program to recycle. And so just the grease, fats, and oils doesn't put that business in compliance with AB eighteen-twenty-six. They also have to have a, a program for their food waste, for the food-soiled paper that's mixed with the food waste. So it's these new materials that there's not a ready market of people out there to collect, like the grease haulers are already established. There's not an established market. And the fact that the state's saying, you city, need to select your program, that's, that's why we're here.
Right, understood, but I, I'm not sure why we're getting involved with this program and we don't get involved with the grease program or even the bulky item pickup. I mean, our bulky item pickup program is a resident has a bulky item to pick up and we send them a flyer and here's the companies you can choose and go and negotiate. I mean, I would be comfortable with, as Richard brought up, you know, starting to educate these eleven businesses, saying, hey, here's what we've negotiated for you eleven businesses with Republic. If you think you can do better, we will certainly help you try and do better. But I, I think we're micromanaging something that we don't even know what we're managing yet, nor does the state. As you say, this is a pilot program, but we're going to incur, and the state's not going to look bad on this. The city's going to look bad because we're going to be raising the rates for businesses. And trust me, we're going to get the phone calls, not the state. So I just want to make sure that we're not putting the cart before the horse. I'm using all the, the terms already been used, but I, I don't want to get aggressively involved with, when all we have to do is adopt, educate, and monitor. And by doing an education program, explaining the program, this is your responsibility. Our responsibility is to have you here and educate you and monitor it. Is that in compliance? And, you know, we can use the same terms with the businesses that you're using with us. The AQMD could come down on you. They could find you. We don't know. But we're, we're willing to go ahead and start incurring costs that we're just not even sure is even going to fly next year.
Well, I, I think, and I don't have the, the list of items in front of me, but I think you're, you're kind of talking along item four because Republic negotiated to provide a, as competitive a rate as we were able to negotiate, for them to get all those businesses and, and roll the program out to them with the eye of growing something. If you just say, that's not going to happen, but if one of these businesses wants to call you up and have this service, we would need to find out from Republic, number one, if they would do that. And number two, what would that rate be just for that business? Is it going to be that one eleventh of a hundred thousand, or is it going to be, you know, we would, we would have to find out what that rate is. Also, where disposal could get their rate, and you could say, this is our program. We're going to let the private sector provide it if you want it. And here's, here's one or two service providers that'll come and collect it from your business, or you can haul it to Pointy Hills Murph, and that, that's your choices. And again.
Well, would that put us in compliance?
You would be, I, I, as I understand it, you would be selecting a program to divert those materials. So you would, in the letter of the law, be in compliance. Again, what I don't know is qualitative analysis of the state, which will contact the city every year and come down and meet, how, how they're going to take that, because it would be kind of a unique approach, at least here in Orange County. But again, it, it, you would be adopting a program. You could say, we have adopted a program to divert the material, and, and here it is.
Right, so we're just trying to be in compliance for this ever-changing, ever-moving state mandate. So that would put us right now, not next year, but right now, in compliance without raising anybody's rates, the city raising anybody's rates.
Correct, and you would be providing, hopefully, an access to a program that somebody could get. Again, we haven't gotten any pricing from where disposal, and we would need to find out from Republic if they would be willing to provide that service in just the onesies, twosies, or if all eleven said, hey, I want the program, what would that cost be? Because again, the cost that was negotiated with them was for the, the city as a whole. So again, it's that, a little bit of the squeezing of the balloon, but it, it sounds like that's the, the direction you're leaning, to just say, okay, here's a program, and it can divert it, and we've, we've jumped through this requirement.
Right, and, and as this evolves and more businesses have to comply, then there's another discussion. But we're still just, we have a pro, here's the program, and as we bring more people on, I mean, it's going to be moving. And I, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with committing this and spreading it out to the city managing the cost. I, I just, because it's not our cost. It's a third-party cost that's being required by these eleven businesses right now.
And it, and it might fall into that no good deed goes unpunished. You negotiate a very good rate for these eleven people, but now your whole business community, which isn't extremely large, is having to pay it. I, I understand. Again.
And do we bring in the eleven businesses and say, here's what it is? This is falling on you. This is falling on you, how would you like us to move forward?" I mean, I just think, I don't want to make a decision up here as the five of us affecting these businesses with no input from them whatsoever. That's what makes me really nervous, because we're going to come back as the bad guys off of a mandate that, once again, we don't get to control or have input to, but they're making us be the bad guys by saying, "Well, you 11, or you 600, or the entire city residents and businesses are going to foot the bill on this." I just, I want more buy-in.
I hope you're done.
Yep.
So what this feels like, Brett, is that this is a startup and nonrecurring effort of a startup cost, and let me kind of give you an analogy of what just happened, right? We had the Boulevard, right, that was revitalized, and the contractor that we selected didn't charge us for trucks, cement trucks, or any of the capital kind of things that he needs to do the job, correct? Is that correct? We didn't pay for any of their trucks, any of the tools that they needed. They have all that stuff. Would that be a fair statement?
Well, I mean, I, we bit it out, so we bit it out, and that's all part of the price of a contract. So did we pay for their direct supplies? No.
Probably just more of the consumables, right? Because businesses invest in capital goods, and they depreciate those over time, whatever's allowed by law. So it seems that what this is, this is a significant investment by a trash hauler that needs this amortized probably across a bunch of their base, which I understand. But is this the right thing for us to be imposing on 700 commercial businesses? And I would imagine they're going to look at other municipalities as well, but it's, to me, this is the nonrecurring startup effort of some significant investment, much like Sand District, right, invests in capital materials that they need in order to accomplish their mission. So that's what it seems like, and I think that, yeah, we have to have a program for the someplace to go. There is existing infrastructure by other providers or other haulers that have not shown an interest in this, but golly, if they have infrastructure, we don't have to pay for the startup of that. We just need to be able to get a place, you know, in the line to dump the stuff. But anyways, that's what it seems like to me, so anyways, that was my last point. Thank you.
Any motion?
Brett, I'd like to see you come back with two plans. One is a skinny plan that reduces the city's involvement as much as legally possible. Second, conversely, a fleshed-out plan, kind of like along the lines of what you already have, but taking into consideration that there doesn't appear to be a lot of desire up here to spread this across all the businesses, and how that would look. And bring that back to us. You know, I know, Brett, you brought up fines, you know, and we're all cognizant the fines are heavy in this thing, but we are legitimately working for a solution here. It's just not easy. It's like, you know, the target keeps moving, and probably for the next year or two is going to move with every new city's contract, or how they take care of things. But I think if you could bring us back those two choices, then maybe we could reach a decision. So that's my motion.
Hold on a second.
Do we know, okay, so just try to figure out what that would look like. Reduce the city, so kind of along the lines of where the mayor was going with a one or a two, offering a program so that we're meeting the due diligence and the good-faith effort, which is what, when I talk to Mike, and when we talk to others, it seems like with CalRecycle, if you're showing the due diligence, which I think we're clearly, as a city, showing our due diligence, and you're making a good-faith effort, and I think if it fits into those categories, we can develop a program, even if it's a smaller version, the scaled-down, as Councilmember Murphy is saying, a scaled-down one and a two type, here it is, it's available, this is the cost. Is that along the lines of where you're saying a scaled-down version?
Yes.
And we can, and we will have to explore that, I think, with Republic as well to see, because we've negotiated that cost down, and Jeff Snow is here tonight, maybe he could also shed some light on whether that may or may not work, if you're willing to speak about that. But we would have to work with our, work with Republic, I think, to help us bring something back and have that dialogue with the council again.
But so, the overall goal, though, is a plan that limits our responsibility and our involvement as much as possible. That would be the skinny plan. The other plan would be a fleshed-out plan that shows how these 11 businesses are going to be affected for one year, and then next year, the number increases. It's still about 160 out of 600, you know, is right, is barely, barely over a quarter, you know, so is there going to be any political will or desire to spread the cost at that point? You know, it's, and maybe, maybe along the way, we explore the 11, and I think the Speaker might have brought this up earlier, that, you know, on a percentage basis, that they pay their cost. They're not going to be just split in 11 ways, you know, it's going to be, somebody's going to produce a lot more waste than others. So let's bring that into effect, too, and give us the option, if there does become a desire to spread the cost, maybe there's a middle ground where you spread the cost a little bit and hit the businesses that are directly involved for the difference. So, you know, there's, I think we all agree we're working towards a goal. It's just, I think that gives us a good scenario that we can have discussion from.
And so then, the item two, the fleshed-out plan, which we really already have negotiated that $129,000 cost, then the council can give us direction, if it's the consensus, to spread, to focus only on allocating those costs among those 11 businesses initially.
At this point, I would go both ways.
Go both ways?
Yeah, I mean, I would show a fleshed-out plan where the businesses pay themselves, a fleshed-out plan where it's spread. Let's leave our options open for right now.
Well, I think that's, I think that's what we have right now. We have the, I mean, we have a fleshed-out plan with the $129,000 cost that we've negotiated down with Republic, and we can either charge the 11 businesses or spread that out among all of the commercial ratepayers.
Well, I think to that end, if we did a rate sheet for the organics program only, that would take that cost, because we had that earlier in the process, and we could show a three-yard bin once a week will cost $397, or whatever it is. That would be the other way to present that information, so that each business would determine how much they have, and now here's how that 129 is spread across that. Again, I think you would want to maybe circle back with Republic on that to get those per-container charges in a rate sheet, maybe compare it with your trash rates, so you could see comparably what the rates are, and that would answer that fleshed-out version. Here's what the businesses would have to pay directly, and then, of course, you could look at percentage-wise if we spread it out, so that would handle that fleshed-out side.
Okay.
And then the other side, we've talked about.
I'm sorry to interrupt, so you had mentioned something on a number like 200 or so commercial accounts that would be forced to comply with this January of 2019?
163 businesses and 48 multifamily properties that you could conceivably find a private-sector third-party to handle that, independent of your hauler.
Okay, so just on the number and not the solution of the number, but so today, we know there's 11 entities, commercial accounts, that generate some portion of eight cubic yards.
Over four cubic yards right now.
And in 2019, we know that there's going to be some number, which I think you said 160-something.
63, roughly.
And so if one were to look at that totality, maybe the amortization is not as steep for the 11, because that is preparing the infrastructure for those, because as the Speaker said earlier, he's not going to generate any organic, so he's not going to be affected.
Right, so that might be another thing to flush out, just if we spread that across the 163 businesses who are going to have to have the program in a year. What would that look like?
Brett, in, in, in general, the more data you can give us, the more options we can discuss. As Troy said, we've got two smart guys up here, and-
No, you said one. You're the smartest guy.
I couldn't help myself. But the point being that if we get, if you give us the options, we can discuss them, and we can narrow them down.
Do you have the two?
Not sure what the motion is, but it's split into the two categories, and Mike's going to help us with this, because we do have him on that retainer agreement, so we will have Mike help us with it. Jeff, you want to help us with this, too?
The plan just, you know, both plans need to adopt, educate, and monitor, then we're compliant, and we can micro or macro as much as we want, as long as we adopt, educate, and monitor, I don't know how the state can possibly come back and say we didn't do that. So.
Madam Mayor, honorable council members, I'm Jeff Snow with Republic Services, and I think we need to take a step back even from that, and I would suggest that the city attorney interpret this legislation and give a report to council. The legislation is very clear, it's not just providing outreach, it is requiring a mandatory program, certification requirements, if you're going to allow self-hauling and have your businesses take it to Pointy Hills or another permitted solid-waste facility, charging and collecting fees to recover the jurisdiction's cost complying with the law. We wish we didn't have to do these things, it's a state mandate, but I think that the council may benefit from additional clarity on what the law requires local government to do. The Speaker is compelling, intelligent, and articulate, but we have attorneys for a reason, and I think that for the council to understand their responsibility may help this move forward more timely.
And I would appreciate that, too, because what, Jeff, what you just said is, the city is going to be charged these costs, and it's up to us to recover.
That is essentially how the legislation is written, but it's generally done and referenced in the legislation through a franchise agreement or some other form.
Is it generally done, so we're going to be sending out the bills to the businesses, or the trash haulers?
It could be, and in our relationship with the city of Los Alamos, we would directly bill those commercial customers.
So that's what I want to understand.
But it would be, it would be on an approved action from city council.
If it's the council's desire to have a more complete analysis of the city's obligations under the existing law, I'd be more than happy to provide that.
I think it falls in line with Richard, is the more data, the better, and legal data is just as important as financial data on this one, because adopt, educate, and monitor is very different than, we're going to get a bill for $129,000, and you figure out how to get reimbursed for it from your businesses.
In addition, Republic Services Group is highly amenable to renegotiating the contract, much as Stanton did, to include full compliance with AB 1826 in a restated and amended agreement, and also would welcome other haulers to bid on an entire new agreement. So we will work with this council and with your fine staff members in any and every way to help find solutions, but I do want you to know overall, this is about getting organics out of the landfill. It's about getting food waste out of the landfill and finding higher and better uses for them. And I think window dressing, to say that we have a program and outreach, and not getting those organics out of the landfill, will ultimately lead to failure and will lead to consequences that are highly undesirable. The Air Resources Board will directly regulate solid waste and jurisdictions like Los Alamos in 2022, per SB 605, if we fail to eliminate organics from the landfill. That's already law. So we want to have a successful program, and we know from past experiences, Oakland was the first city to adopt a program back in 2015. They placed all the costs on the actual generators, and it was not good at that city hall for a long time. We have learned that spreading those costs out, so that the food waste recycling costs the same as the trash, is really the only path to success, so that there's not an economic disincentive in addition to all the behavioral disincentives that our food waste generators have. Some of them have to hire extra people, they already have the minimum wage laws, there's a lot of burden in them complying, and then when we, on top of that, say, "Your bills for your trash is going to triple or quadruple," they simply will not comply until the city finds them amounts that are higher than the cost of that. And that's just not, that's managing with a big stick and no carrot. So I understand the Speaker's position, I understand that we all pay property taxes to support education, yet a lot of people that own property don't have children in public schools. It's just one of, you know, it's about finding a program for Los Alamos that's going to be successful, and it's a difficult decision, and as Mr. Ballier said, I don't envy you, but I can speak on behalf of experience in what will increase the likelihood of success for the program, and what will decrease the likelihood of success. And a generator-rate-only program has not had success in any city in the state. Those that have implemented them have either gone through a series of escalating fines and penalties, or they have converted and gone to sector-wide adjustment, and as Mr. Ballier said, in 13 months from now, we're in Tier 3, and we're going to be into the hundreds of customers that do it, and in 2020, not that far away, virtually every one of the 607 commercial accounts will have to have some kind of organics recycling program set up. So we use the word pilot, not sure why, it's not a pilot. Our proposal is for 100% compliance for all of the organic waste from your commercial sector for the current Tier 1 and Tier 2. We've worked very hard with staff and with the consultant on making it as economically feasible as possible, but these unfunded mandates are never easy. If we're going to delay the action, I certainly understand and respect that decision, but I think at a minimum, we should get clarity on what local governments' requirements really are and what they really aren't. So I appreciate your consideration of utilizing your city attorney to provide that clarity to council.
Thank you, and understand, and we're not making light of it. We're delaying it to get more clarity, because we are not just doing this for the one speaker, but for all of our businesses and residents, and for futures. So we just want to make sure that we completely understand what the impact is, both positive and negative, so we can make an educated decision.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do you have a motion? Did you have to finish your motion?
I thought I had.
I'll second that motion. I was with you, Rich.
Thank you.
When do you read that?
Yeah. Can you read that?
Very good, very, very, very smooth.
The two smart ones know what the motion is, but the rest of us need help.
So the motion is to bring back a plan, one with the basic, the bare minimums of what the state, the city would need to be in compliance, and the second plan would be to be all-inclusive, to spread the cost across just the 11 users or across all the users, but to bring back as much data as possible, and direct the city attorney to provide an analysis on the city's legal requirements.
Perfect. We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Could, as we're on the subject, could I request again, actually more so, now that Mr. Snow has spoken, it made me realize we're only facing the problem in front of us, and there are a series of laws, it sounds like, are going to affect us, and the state is going to crush us someday. And we need, we need the long-term analysis of all the laws and all the steps that are going to happen within the next five or six years, as part of our analysis. And if we could present it in a workshop, where we can bring in our planning commission, bring in the 11 suppliers now and other businesses, the chamber, you know, let's get the word out there that this is a problem that has to be solved, and there's going to be some tough votes, but we're going to have to solve it. I mean, there's no doubt about that. have to solve it. I mean, there's no doubt about that, because, and I think that both our experts have agreed that as we move forward, the law is probably going to be changing. So, it's going to, not only going to take something now, it's going to take constant monitoring for the next four or five years as the regulations get put in place. That's my request. Would anybody help me second that?
Well, I think we've already passed what we-
No, no, no. I mean, would you second, I need a second to put it on the agenda.
Oh.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we're going to come back to council comments, if there's any additional ones. Richard, you're done?
I've had enough today.
We can't handle another motion.
I'm good. Thank you.
You're good?
I would like to say goodbye to Cory.
I don't have to.
Okay.
If we don't say goodbye, he doesn't leave, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we are adjourned and in memory of Maxine Edgar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Oh, what a good meeting.